You know, Counsel Willens checking in. Can you hear me okay?
Good morning, Counselor Willens. You're coming through loud and clear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, members of council, just before we get started, I'm just going to confirm there are three members participating remotely. Counselor Williams, Counselor Willens, and Counselor Santos. And present in the chambers in person is Counselor Dillon, Counselor Singh, Counselor Maderos, Counselor Bowman, Counselor Paleshi, Counselor Visante. And Counselor Fortini is chairing today's special council meeting. We will get underway momentarily. Thank you.
So, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the special council meeting for March 11, 2022. This meeting has been called by a resolution of council for the following specific purpose. Under the council meeting rules, no other business can be concerned for this special meeting. We will begin with the meeting with the city clerk calling the rule of attendance on today's meeting.
Members of council, I will call your name. Please indicate your presence. Counselor Dillon. Present. Counselor Singh. Present. Counselor Williams.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Maderos. Present. Counselor Bowman. Present. Counselor Paleshi. Present. Counselor Willens.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Visante. Present. Counselor Santos.
Present.
Thank you. And Chair Fortini is present. And just for members of councils information, Mayor Brown is not able to attend today's meeting for other municipal business. We have ten members present. Mr. Chair, you can proceed.
Thank you. I was gonna say that. So, we're at item two of the agenda. We have a motion moved by Counsel Paleshi and second by Counsel Bowman, approve of the agenda. Instead of seeking a recorded vote, I will ask if anyone opposed to this motion either rise or vote will be counted in a formative. So, there is none. Mr. Clerk, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just advise that there was correspondence that was received in the clerk's office, I believe late last night. I believe it was sent to members of council from Cody Vacher, dated March 10th. So, that will be received or considered as part of 4.1 under the delegations for receipt. And it'll be published on the city's website with the agenda after the meeting concludes today.
Thank you. We're at item number three, Declaration of Interest of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration pecuniary interest on the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act a matter in concern of today's agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk? I'm sorry. I don't see it here. No, I don't see it. Oh, okay. Counselor Singh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a question to the clerk or to legal. If there is a motion today to remove the IC, would a declaration...
Hold on. Yes, we gotta go. We already...
No, I'm asking about declaration. It's on the agenda. I was gonna ask if there would be a declaration of conflict of interest. I think that's a fair question. Why not? It was, it's in the media. Yeah, I'm asking about the, it's an item on the agenda. I'm not gonna ask about anything else. Yeah. Yeah. So, if there is a motion, I'm not saying there is, if there is, given sort of the sequence of events and media, you know, responses to this, would this be the point to declare a conflict of interest?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps I'll start. So, somebody's computer microphone. Oh, okay. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Singh. So, members know the topic of today's meeting, which is about the integrity commissioner and lobbyist registrar position. So...
So, just to be clear, it's just the heading. There's no motion, no nothing right now. For the public, nobody. We had a change of code of conduct yesterday. And today, we have just this, no motion, nothing, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I don't know if it's coming or not. That's why I'm asking, if it is, would this be the point to declare a conflict?
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I could just finish. So, yes, based on the information that's available at the time, members have to make a decision based on now. Should other information come to light in the course of debate, and this regardless of the issue, a motion's introduced or the debate goes down a certain pathway, and members feel that they have a potential conflict, then they can declare at that point in time. But nothing precludes them from, the door doesn't shut now that they can't declare a conflict. They can declare it at the point to which they become aware that the information or the matter that's before council on the floor, that they may have a declaration. That's the time to declare.
Okay. And should, well, it's up to members themselves to declare conflict, or?
That is correct.
Okay. And for purposes, for transparency purposes, if a member is going through an investigation, for example, I know myself, I'm not currently, but other, I don't know about other members. There's no place where this is reported if you're currently going through an investigation or not, correct? Could the public find out anyway if anybody's going through an investigation right now?
Through you. Perhaps that should be a discussion that's asked at the time of the debate, if there is a debate on that particular point. But as members know, complainants communicate directly with the integrity commissioner. And that information is known between the complainant, the integrity commissioner, and depending on whether an investigation may be launched, the affected member. And there's a requirement under the municipal act for the integrity commissioner to maintain confidence of that complaint and the complaint process until the integrity commissioner is ready to report with a report...
Or unless there's been a motion from council to send something to the integrity commissioner.
Yes, and that's a possibility. Council has done that in the past, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'll wait for this subject to come up.
Okay, let's move on. So, number four, there is a...
Excuse me, sorry, it was on the board, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Counsel Santos. I'm sorry, I can't see the names. They're not popping up.
That's okay. That's quite all right, Mr. Chair. So, just in terms of follow-up to what Counsel Singh was just alluding to, should a, should a motion come forward with respect to a possible termination of the integrity commissioner, I intend to declare a conflict of interest because there was a complaint that was filed. And, you know, in an enormous abundance of caution, if a motion is then placed on the floor to terminate the IC, I will declare a conflict. Because there's currently, there's currently, there's currently complaint based on some of the questions that Counsel Singh has shared. Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll move on to, I think we have a delegation, 4.1.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Not a delegation, but we do have correspondence, which is from Cody Vacher. And it is for receipt. And there is a motion on the screen.
So, that would be moved by Counsel Dillon and by Counsel Paleshi.
I, sorry, Mr. Chair, I have a question with respect to the correspondence that was filed.
Go ahead.
In the correspondence, in the letter from Cody Vacher, yeah, thank you, Mr. Clerk, for putting on the screen. If you could just scroll down. That paragraph there. Last year, Counselor Gerpreet Dillon was ordered by a judge to pay cost in the sum of $20,000 to the integrity commissioner.
Hold on.
Yep.
This point of order was called?
The fact that the member wanted to ask a question, I'd like to move receipt. The receipt was, the motion was on the floor. So, city clerk, can we proceed with receiving the correspondence?
I'm sorry, I have a question about the correspondence to staff.
A receipt was moved, then. It's not been officially received.
So, through you, Mr. Chair. So, if a motion generally is introduced for receipt of correspondence, but members are free to ask questions, so they have questions, whether it's a delegation or correspondence on the agenda. So, if the question is pertaining to the correspondence, it is fair for...
Today's special council meeting?
Yes, because, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, my understanding is regarding today's special council meeting. And there's here that's not related to the special council meeting.
So, through you, Mr. Chair, the special council meeting was called for the purpose of dealing with the position of the integrity commissioner and the lobbyist registrar. So, as long as the matter, whether it's a delegation or correspondence, relates to the subject or the purpose of the special meeting, which in this case, this particular letter appears to, then that's why, as I mentioned at the beginning, that it is part of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So, can I continue with my question?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Last year, Counsel, I'm just reading from the letter that's on, you know, there. I'm just reading. "Last year, Counselor Gerpreet Dillon was ordered by a judge to pay cost in the sum of $20,000 to the integrity commissioner after his unsuccessful judicial review of her investigation and findings. If this sum of money is still outstanding, then he may have a pecuniary interest that should be declared at the start of the meeting." Now, I understand that a motion regarding the possible termination of the integrity commissioner has not been tabled as of yet. However, I'm just wondering whether or not that $20,000 that is owed to the integrity commissioner because of the failed judicial review, if that money is still outstanding or if Counsel Dillon did actually pay that money? Because I'm concerned there may be a pecuniary interest if that money is still outstanding. So, I guess that's a question to Counsel Dillon.
Well, I guess, you know, we could ask staff about that if it's paid. Maybe he has a deadline. Probably give him a year, two years, like you do in any court. And I don't think so. A personal stuff like this should be asked, and that's up to him.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I didn't ask you the question. I asked whether or not Counsel Dillon would like to respond.
And he said no. He said no. That's why I jumped in.
Okay, I didn't hear it because I'm participating virtually. So, like, I, so, he said no to not responding to the question or no to not owing money to the integrity commissioner because...
Not to respond, no comment, he said. So...
Okay, fair enough. That's fine. Because every individual member has the right, determines their own conflict or not. And as I said earlier, I will declare a conflict if the integrity commissioner, if there's a motion to terminate the integrity commissioner. And this here is suspect.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 5.1, a discussion. Yeah, sorry. I had that right. Remove it. That's done. So, our next item is 5.1, a discussion. I am regarding...
My apologies, Mr. Chair. We need, Counsel Maderos has moved receipt. We need a second or four.
Counsel Dillon, Counsel Paleshi.
Okay, my apologies.
I already put that on there. Okay. So, our next item is a discussion, item regarding integrity commissioner lobby register. So, before we carry on with this discussion, Counsel Maderos, I know the other night we kind of got a little bit of a hand. So, let's watch how we, what we say, all of us here. And I'll leave it to you, Counsel Maderos.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Fortini. Two, I know I have spoken with city solicitor. He's suggested that he wants to, we should go in camera for advice. So, I guess, city solicitor, if you would like to comment.
Through the chair, I've already informed the city clerk that I've spoken to the counselor. And given the nature of the discussions, for a portion that relates to receiving solicitor-client advice, we can go into a closed session.
Okay. I'm happy to move that we go into in camera, please.
Okay. Moved by Counsel, sir? Counsel Paleshi? It's okay, it's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I need a better understanding of the rationale for going into camera other than, and based off of what solicitor-client privilege you'll be providing with us. Not directly what that, what you're going to be telling us in closed, but why we're going into closed.
Through the chair. In order to give legal advice in relation to the topic at hand, which is related to the position of the integrity commissioner, I suggest that we go into legal advice to, sorry, go into closed so that I can provide the relevant legal advice and answer any questions that council may have of a legal nature.
So, Samir, and I'm gonna try and understand, but I'm not gonna leave this one alone there. The integrity commissioner is a public figure based off of who the public can file complaints with about any member of council. Members of council are public figures. So, if it's related specifically to an investigation, then I would say an ongoing investigation that is not yet released in public, I would say, okay. But if it's related to any kind of topics around the integrity commissioner and council, then I think that should be public discussion. And last time we went into camera, when we were in camera, it was said by not only the chair of that committee, the clerk that was in that meeting, that a lot of those discussions that we were having should have been, should be had in public. Now, we then came out in public, and I made sure that what I said was, was public discussions. But I'm still not...
Guys, please.
But I'm still not convinced as to the rationale as to why we're going in camera.
Through the chair, in my discussions with the councilors, I brought up this topic. It was clear to me that there were issues related to, legal issues that council may want to get legal advice on, and I suggested that it be done in closed session.
Okay.
I do agree with you that those matters that are not related to legal advice are other exceptions under the municipal act, should be discussed in open.
Okay. So, I'm only going to ask you, Samir, and the clerk, that, and you, Mr. Chair, that we pay special attention to any discussions that are happening in camera. And if any of those discussions that are happening in camera should be public discussions, those discussions are stopped, and we come out into open to have those discussions. That's all I'm asking. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We just gotta, like Samir said, we gotta watch what we said. Like the other night, I think he was, anything in camera, we gotta keep it in camera. We could talk about anything else. Okay. Yeah, and Counsel Paleshi will second it to go in camera. So, Mr. Clerk, can we take a vote? A recorded vote? Nope. Anyone opposed? It's going in camera. Seeing none? That carries. So, how long do you need, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we will need 20 minutes because I will need to send the members of council a invite for the closed session for the... need to send the members of Counsel a invite for the closed session, for the members participating remotely, so you will be receiving shortly a invitation for the, the team's closed session, um, so 20 minutes would be appreciated, Mr. Chair.
So, it's, uh, what time is it now, uh?
11:45.
Okay, yep, 11:45 is fine.
Thank you.
So, members of Counsel, this meeting is now recessed to 11:45 to reconvene in closed session, I will be sending a team's invitation to those, uh, members, to all members of Counsel and those staff that need to be in attendance for that particular item, members of, uh, staff and the public watching or participating in today's meeting, you can stay in the WebEx session until Counsel reconvenes to, uh, report out from closed session and continue its business on today's special meeting, thank you.
Please, here.
And members of Counsel, members of staff, members of the public, uh, watching or participating in today's meeting, Counsel's, um, completed its closed session business at this time, and will be reconvening in open session momentarily, thank you. So, members of Counsel, just before we get started, I see Counsel Willens, Counsel Williams, and Counsel Santos, uh, participating remotely, and just for the record, the members that are present in the chambers are Chair Fortini, Counsel Maderos, Counselor Dylan, Counselor Singh, Counselor Bowman, Counselor Paleshi, and Counselor Vasante. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, you do have a quorum, we can reconvene in-
Okay, thank you, so we're back on close, so I'll let the clerk, uh, give directions to what happened in closed.
So, through you, Mr. Chair, um, Counsel, uh, Charlotte, if you can just go back up to the, the reason, just for a moment, please, um, no, thank you, I just wanna use that to recite, so, uh, Counsel moved into closed session to consider, uh, an open meeting exception under Section 239-2F of the Municipal Act, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, so during closed session, information was received, uh, and considered, and no direction was given to staff. Um, we are now back into open session, and, um, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, so thank you, so I got Counsel Maderos on the board.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, City Clerk, if, if you can bring up a, a motion, uh, that I would like to move-
So, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, Charlotte will bring up the motion, I think there's four clauses.
Uh, it's moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Portini, um, and, uh, essentially, as it's-
And then Charlotte, if you can just scroll to the, to four parts so they're visible, thank you.
Hello, it's Counsel Santos, point of order.
Point of order, Counsel Santos.
Thank you, I'm gonna have to declare, uh, a, uh, conflict of interest at this time, please.
So, Counsel Santos, if you're declaring a conflict, uh, if you can just state the, the general nature of the conflict for the record, and, please?
Yeah, so the, um, there's, uh, currently a complaint that the current IC is, uh, looking at with respect to, uh, myself, and so I, in an enormous abundance of caution, um, I will be declaring, uh, a conflict with respect to the, the termination of that contract with the IC.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll be leaving the meeting now.
Counsel Bowman?
Thank you very much, um, in an enormous amount of caution, I will declare a conflict too, but my conflict is based on ongoing, um, issues with the IC.
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Counsel Bowman.
Counsel Vasante?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do not have a declaration, I was going to speak to the motion.
Counsel Singh? Okay, so Counsel Maderos, the motion's on the floor?
Uh, so, I'm moving a motion, uh, and thank you for seconded, please, um, regarding, if you scroll down, uh, Mr. Fay, yep, uh, so the motion does state- So I won't read that out, members can take some time to read it, uh, and I'd ask for a recorded vote, and following this, uh, through guidance with our, uh, City Solicitor in consultation, um, we will, uh, I would request that we go in camera to provide direction, further direction as a result of, uh, this motion.
Okay, so, you know, like a legal?
A recorded vote, please.
Oh. Camera?
Through the Chair, so is this the vote on the motion, or the, uh, going into-
We're gonna ask a vote, sorry, Mr. Clerk, so a recorded vote, you still wanna speak on the motion?
There are speakers, Mr. Chair.
There are speakers, okay, Counsel Singh first.
Yeah, I'd just like to move over, roll back to staff, I'd like, uh, opinion on conflict of interest, and if members have any conflict or pecu- of interest, and if members have any conflict or opinion.
Sorry? Can't hear you.
Oh, I'd like to move a referral back to, am I yelling now?
Yeah.
Referral back to staff. I'd like a legal opinion handled by the clerk's office and our legal counsel, if members do have a conflict of interest or not. I think we should have some clarity before voting on this. Thank you.
Through, through the chair. The concern I have with that, that motion is that the city solicitor's office does not provide legal opinions about individual members' conflicts of interest, and in fact, that is the role of the integrity commissioner to opine on and advise on.
Okay, then I'll send it back to the integrity commissioner.
Counselor Visante?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just looking at the motion now for the first time. Am I only permitted to speak to the referrals? I would support the referral. Thank you.
So, we have to vote on the referral, the referral first, Mr. Park?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. We'll vote on the referral first, but we're just gonna make sure that the referral is on the screen. So, Charlotte, as I understand, Counselor Singh's motion is that the motion be referred to the integrity commissioner for further review in regards to, I think, Counselor, you said?
Conflict of interest.
Potential declarations of conflict of interest by members?
But, can I send it to the clerk's office, or to the?
We have to vote on it first?
Through you, just for clarity. As the city solicitor has correctly pointed out, this is one of seven responsibilities of the integrity commissioner set out in the municipal act in terms of providing advice to members of council regarding potential conflict of interest issues. So, it's appropriate to go to the integrity commissioner.
Okay. So, a recorded vote has been called? Oh, sorry. Counselor Palessi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know it's, you don't see the speakers list, but thank you for, I'm, you don't have a second, or I'm happy to second this and support this for the information to come back prior to making the decision.
Okay. Counselor Maderos?
Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I am speaking against the referral, and I will say I find it complex that we would send it to the integrity commissioner, who is the basis of the motion. So, that in itself would be a conflict for the IC to consider if other people have conflicts. So, that in itself, I think, is conflictual. So, I vote against, I will not support this referral. Thank you very much.
So, if I could speak to the?
Counselor Singh?
Counselor Maderos, you make a point I agree with. So, if you have a suggestion of who we consented to, I'm more than happy to support that. Do you have a suggestion, or?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, we're gonna have a vote on the deferral, referral, sorry, on the discussion on the deferral. Counselor Singh? Counselor Dillon, put your name on the board, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Would Counselor Bowman and Santos have to declare a conflict on this motion, or can they vote on this as well?
That's up to individual, yes.
So, through you, Mr. Chair. The two council, members of council have declared a conflict. So, they've left, and they've, they are not participating in this debate, whether it's the main motion or the referral.
Fair enough.
So, a recorded vote's been called. Mr. Park?
So, through you, Mr. Chair. The recorded vote, then, is being called on the first motion, which is, has precedent, which is the referral motion from Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Palessi, as highlighted on the screen. A recorded vote has been requested on the referral motion. All in favor, please indicate. Counselor Dillon?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Singh?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Williams?
No.
It's a no. Counselor Maderos?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Bowman has declared a conflict. Counselor Palessi?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Willens?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Visante?
Yes.
That's a yes. Mayor Brown is, I just want to confirm, is not present. I think he's still absent. Chair Fortini?
No.
That's a no. The motion does not, referral does not carry. The vote is three to five.
So, we have the second motion now, recorded vote?
So, through you, Mr. Chair. This is on the Counselor Maderos' motion, seconded by Counselor Fortini. All those in favor of the motion, please?
So, Counselor Visante?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you for giving me an opportunity just to very quickly express that I am opposed to this motion. I stated many reasons on Wednesday when we changed the code of conduct that has led us to this point here. We, we have no reason in my mind to make this change at this time. And I, at length, explained why I thought that what we did on Wednesday was not correct. But that being said, that is my view. And given my stand on this issue, which has been very well explained, I cannot support this motion. And I believe that this is not in the best interest of the city of Brampton, and of the spirit of council to uphold accountability and transparency measures which apply to all members of council. We had an integrity commissioner who has dealt with, I think, a very significant number of files, some very significant files during the time that they were under contract to the city of Brampton. And from, from my eye in viewing and reading, and ruminating on the reasons for each and every decision, it is my view that in every case, the decision was well considered, well thought out, well presented. And in my view, the integrity commissioner gave value to the city. And I know that in the past, there have always been discussions at the city of Brampton, you know, about integrity commissioner. I always say, there's gonna be at least one person who is disappointed with the integrity commissioner in every single case, whether it's the person who lodges the complaint, and the complaint is found to be without merit, and they're disappointed. I'm speaking to integrity commissioners and the value of an integrity commissioner and what they provide to the city. In, in any case that an integrity commissioner will deal with, there's always gonna be at least one person who's disappointed with the outcome, whether it's the person who filed the complaint thinking that a member of council broke a section of the code of conduct, and the integrity commissioner finds that there isn't sufficient reason to do so, so the complainant is unhappy with that outcome. Or perhaps, it is the person who is a subject of the complaint who may, on some circumstance or some point, vehemently disagree with the findings of an integrity commissioner. So, but we respect the work of an integrity commissioner in all cases. And that has been my experience in my time, my limited time, with the integrity commissioner thus far. And so, for those reasons and the ones that I stated on Wednesday, I cannot support this motion. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Maderos? No? Okay. I'm gonna ask for a recorded vote, but before, I'd like to say, I don't say anything about, in this motion, she hasn't performed anything. This is about, you know, I think, part ways, and it's illegal. For me, it's a good motion, and I will support it. So, a register, a recorded vote has been done, asked. So, Mr. Park?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote's been requested on the main motion moved by Counselor Maderos, seconded by Counselor Fortini, as shown on the screen. All in favor, please indicate. Counselor Dillon?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Singh?
No.
It's a no. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
It's a yes. Counselor Maderos?
Yes.
It's a yes. Counselor Bowman has declared a conflict. Counselor Palessi?
No.
That's a no. Counselor Willens?
Yes.
It's a yes. Counselor Visante?
No.
It's a no. Counselor Santos has declared a conflict. Mayor Brown is absent. Chair Fortini?
Yes.
That's a yes. The motion carries five to three.
Okay. Counselor Maderos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As advised previous to moving the motion, I have been, I've received guidance from the city solicitor regarding direction to staff, and it's been suggested we go in camera. So, I'd like to move a motion that we go in camera.
Okay, so, I'll take a motion with Counselor Maderos, and seconded by Counselor Palessi. Are we moving camera?
Through the chair. So, so everybody is, is clear. There, I have talked to Counselor Maderos, and I feel that we can go into camera for the open meeting exception under 239-2K of the municipal act, a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Okay. So, how much more time do we need, Mr. Park?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, after the vote on whether to go into closed or not for, under the exception under item K, I would appreciate 10 minutes, please.
Recession, we'll convene back at 1:55.
We need to take the vote first.
Oh, let's take the vote, too. In closed, everyone in favor? Counselor Maderos and Counselor Palessi have seconded. Anyone opposed? See none? We go in closed.
So, through you, Mr. Chair. This meeting is now recessed at 1:45 for 10 minutes to reconvene at 1:55 in closed session. Members can use the same team's invite for the earlier closed session. Thank you.
Am I connected? It's Counselor Singh. Just wanted to confirm.
Yes, Counselor, you're clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tammy. It's Peter. I'm just rejoining, and then I'll give you back host.
Thank you, Peter.
Members of council, just before we get, we reconvene, I'm just gonna identify the members I see remote. I see Counselor Santos, Counselor Singh, Counselor Willens, Counselor Williams, Counselor Palessi. And the members that are present in chambers are Chair Fortini, Counselor Maderos, Counselor Dillon, Counselor Bowman, and Counselor Visante. So, Mr. Chair, you do have a quorum. You can proceed.
Well, and I just saw, direction was given, so Peter can, we put that back. Sorry, first, I think we wanted the motion up?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We should, we'll deal with the report out from closed first, and then we, a request can be made for that. So, through you, Mr. Chair, members of, members of council. Charlotte, can you just scroll up, so I can just read the reason we went into closed again? Thank you. So, council moved into closed for its second session of closed session during this meeting, under the open meeting exception under Section 239-2K of the municipal act, a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by, on, by, or on behalf of the municipality or local board. And information was received in closed session, and was considered, and direction was given to staff. And that's the report out from closed session, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do we vote on this? We don't need a vote outside, no. So, we also, I think, Counselor Williams wanted to see the motion that we actually had. She didn't see it. If we could put it back up on the screen?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, to members of council. So, I think there was a request before council reconvened in open session from a member to say that some members watching today's live stream were not able to see the motion that did carry regarding the integrity commissioner and lobbyist registrar. The motion is now on the screen, and this did carry by a recorded vote of five to three by council earlier in today's meeting. Counselor Williams, just want to confirm, you can see it on the screen?
Yeah, just to clarify, some residents who are watching the council meeting wasn't able to see the motion on the screen. I saw it fine. I knew what I was voting on. But those watching it in the public were not able to see this motion. And I can see it on the screen right now as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, we move on to the bylaws, 9.1. Mr. Park?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. And there is no bylaws at this point in time. So, we can move to the?
Question period?
Public question period?
Yeah. Is there anybody from the public?
Just bear with me. I'm just gonna check. So, there is no questions. There was, it looks like there was a delegation request that came in, but this came in after the meeting started at 5:01. So, it was after council had started. So, I will confer with this person that wrote this, and then share this email, if warranted, with all members of council for their information.
Okay. So, we'll move for adjournment? Yeah. Oh, sorry, the confirming bylaw. Moved by Counselor Maderos, seconded by Counselor Willens. All in favor? That carries. We go into adjournment. So, our next council meeting will be Wednesday, April 6, 9:30, as a regular meeting. Moved by Counselor Singh, and seconded by Counselor Palessi for the adjournment. All in favor? That carries. Thank you, everyone, and thank you.